City of Sanford, City Commission Meeting, Monday, April 11th, 2016, 7:00 PM. City Commission Chambers, First Floor, Sanford City Hall, 300 North Park Avenue, Sanford, Florida.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna call the meeting to order. The mayor isn't here today, he asked me to step in for him, so hopefully we can get through this without too much difficulty. I think I've only done this maybe one other time in all the years I've been here, so it just, if it doesn't go smooth, it's Jeff's fault. So, we're gonna start off tonight, the first thing we could do is some ceremonial matters, first thing is a legislative prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Arnold Cotton, if you wouldn't mind coming down and leading us, that would be fantastic. Everybody would please rise.
Our Father, as we come now before your throne of grace, we come, Holy Father, first of all, to say thank you. Master, we thank you for this day and for the blessings that thou bestowed upon us, how you kept us throughout this day. And we ask now, Master, that you would bless our leaders, that you would keep them of sound mind and of sound body as they make decisions for our city. And Father, we pray your blessings upon the citizens of this great city, that you would bless every home and every family with love, peace, and joy. Finally, we ask your blessings upon our nation, that you would lead us and guide us according to your holy and divine will. Holy Father, we realize that you are sovereign, and we give you all of the praise and all of the glory and all of the honor. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first thing we have on the agenda tonight is we have several proclamations. The first one is the North American Occupational Safety and Health Week, and also the Occupational Safety and Health Professional Day. Is, I believe it's Chris White, is Chris White here? Chris, if you'll come on down, I'll read this into the record with you. All right, the proclamation reads, whereas the residents of Sanford value safe and healthy workplace for all our citizens, and whereas the majority of workplace injuries and fatalities are presentable, however, more than 4,600 workers die each year from job-related injuries, and millions more suffer occupational injuries and illnesses. Whereas businesses spend $62 billion a year on the cost of the most disabling workplace injuries tied to occupational injuries, health care, and illnesses, and whereas safer organizations also increase productivity, higher employee satisfaction, and a better reputation while reporting less lost time and lower workers' compensation and health care costs. Whereas during the week of May 1 through 7, 2016, North American Occupational Safety and Health Week, and the American Society of Safety-Engineered Members, the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, and Corporation Association Partners representing thousands of businesses will mobilize in an effort to increase employer, employee, and public awareness of being safe at work to encourage safe practices, in order to help companies and organizations enhance their workplace safety efforts. Whereas on May 4th, 2016, Occupational Safety and Health Professionals will be recognized on Occupational Safety and Health Professional Day for their commitment to protect people, property, and the environment and work in their communities. Now therefore, I hereby proclaim, May 1 through 7, 2016, to be NAOSH Week, and Wednesday, May 4th, 2016, to be Occupational Safety and Health Professional Day. Also, I encourage all industry, organizations, community leaders, employers, and employees to support activities designed to increase awareness of the importance of a safe workplace for all. Thank you. Thank you. National Volunteer Week? Chief, are you doing National Volunteer Week?
Yes.
Come on.
Y'all heard him, can't take it.
I'm gonna read the paper, man, congratulations.
Am I gonna have to read this? I'm gonna just wait my square.
I'll read it with you.
Guys, would you join us up here, please? We'd like to have you guys.
Two more please, I'll stand here.
I know, we have one walking, we'll do it. And as you're walking up, I'll tell you, Chief, Smith says, "Your guys, it's duty period elsewhere." He's here and talk to you.
You got big camera cameras. All right, sir, are you ready? All right. Whereas citizens who volunteer their time to provide assistance which cannot be measured in terms of dollars, volunteers provide a spirit of assistance that is invaluable. Whereas more than 100 million volunteers are working in their communities throughout the nation, giving of their time and talent making a difference. And whereas volunteers are motivated by the satisfaction that they are helping their fellow citizens, and by the appreciation they receive from the department and the city they serve. Whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive community, over 40 volunteers gave their time to the Sanford Police Department in excess of 5,000 hours in 2015, which is a savings to the city of $105,000. Now therefore, I hereby proclaim the week of April 10th through April 16th, 2016, as National Volunteer Week, 2016. I also encourage all citizens of Sanford to join in this tribute to recognize those who volunteer their time and commend them for their efforts. Thank you, everybody.
Commissioner, Commissioner, before you take the picture, I think it would be appropriate for the volunteer coordinator to also be included.
We have walking wounded, sir.
Hey Randy, I think we all should be in a picture with him.
Well, we all appreciate it, I should just share in it. That's beautiful.
Can you get someone here?
Art? These are tall.
Okay.
And the next picture, everybody else.
One more, here we go.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. You get right?
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to introduce two members of the mayor's youth council to be presented the Everyone Matters Day proclamation. Taryn Perkins and Olivia Ellis, will you please come up front? Thank you.
Okay, here we go. Whereas on National Everyone Matters Day, people around the world will celebrate together and acknowledge everyone's right and freedom to be who they are without shame or judgment. Whereas the purpose of Everyone Matters Day is to raise awareness that everyone is entitled to be treated with dignity and respect. Whereas Everyone Matters Day is a worldwide movement founded to bring people of all races, color, religion, sex, and national origin together in order to encourage people to embrace inclusiveness and tolerance. Whereas Everyone Matters Day is about everybody's value, that we all count, that we all should be proud of who we are, what we represent as we are. Whereas Everyone Matters Day is one of the many great ways that we acknowledge and instill in our youth that everyone, no matter how different they appear, all human beings are important and have something to offer the world. Whereas Everyone Matters Day is an opportunity for the city of Sanford to reaffirm our commitment to making our community a caring and friendly place to live, work, and play, void of bigotry, prejudices, prejudices, and racism. Now therefore, I hereby proclaim, I hereby proclaim, April 12th, as 2016, April 12th, 2016, as Everyone Matters Day. Here in the city of Sanford, and I encourage all citizens to join me embracing diversity of ourselves, each other, and fostering an environment of inclusion and tolerance.
Would you like to stand up for Everyone Matters Day and take a picture with me?
Well, of course, thank you.
Of course. Or she's not gonna believe this, huh? Yeah. What are you, what are you shooting at? Okay. Very nice.
Thanks, guys.
Keep it. Yeah. Keep it.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the minutes from the March 28th, 2006 work session in regular meeting.
Move for a second.
Move for a second?
Yeah.
Is that in favor? I'm just gonna handle the whole thing all in one.
Okay.
So, is there a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the consent agenda, items A through D. If there's nothing to, anybody has anything to pull, pull it now, or I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I did have one to pull, just was hoping to get a little more explanation on it, Mr. Vice Mayor, and that is C. Just because we didn't have a work session and haven't, I just had a few questions.
Okay, then we'll pull C for further discussion. Items A, B, and D, is there a motion? Mr. Approve Consent A, B, and D.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, item C.
Hey Paul, so just, can you just give us a little more background on this? I, you know, there's not a whole lot in the write-up, and we didn't have a work session, so, you know, just the way that it reads, with the potential $10 per day, $10,000 a day fine, et cetera, et cetera, what's gonna happen?
Well, actually, nothing's gonna happen if this gets approved and signed. We're under a consent order with the fee to remove our nutrients from the replant water at our north wastewater plant.
That's from '09, right?
Right, and we've been working toward that. They didn't put the limit numbers in there, so they're going back with a consent order to basically do what we've already been doing, so while we're under construction, we'll be legal, and then it all should be finished by end of the year, and then the plant will be up and running, and the nutrients will be lower once the treatment is constructed this thing.
Okay, now I got a better understanding of it. Okay.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. of the Commission, Mr. Moore was interviewed today by the television on the question, particularly the question about the penalties, and Mr. Moore's assured us that there will be no penalty, that we have everything in place, so there won't be the penalty.
So, I'll move to approve item C on the consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on Consent C, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks, Mr. Moore.
Motion passes unanimously. Now, under the public hearings, we have, A is the continuation of first reading of ordinance number 4374, approving a mural moratorium, while the Public Art Commission creates a public art ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and Mr. of the Commission, this item is on because it was on a prior meeting, and it was set certain for today's date, however, the recommendation of staff is that it be also forwarded for consideration on April the 25th.
Well, can I say something about this, since I'm the commissioner that sits on the Public Art Commission? What would be the point of forwarding it to April 25th? To have the P and Z look at it?
There are other groups that are looking at it, and I think Mr. Gibson could indicate that that's the case, correct?
I...
Mr. Gibson, and the commission is moving, our commission is moving forward with their ordinance, are they not?
Well, that's what I was gonna talk about, Mr. Vice Mayor, is that I, you wanna, Russ to go first or me?
I'll have Russ answer your question first, I suppose.
Yeah, okay.
You can follow up.
Hi, good evening, Russ Gibson, Director of Planning and Development Services. Your Public Art Commission is indeed most dedicated in terms of moving forward with not only developing as they are charged with in terms of a public art ordinance, but moreover to specifically focus on the component addressing murals. They have their regularly monthly meetings, but in this case, they have already had a special work session towards that pursuit, and they have another work session scheduled later this month before their next regular meeting, which is at the end of this month.
When is that, Russ?
Their work session is April 19th, and their next regular board meeting is April 26th. So, as I lay out the timeline, your Public Art Commission and staff are both diligently working, and I might add, our city attorney's office, especially Mr. Groot, has been most helpful in terms of, again, helping our Public Art Commission move forward with their overall charge, but specifically the mural moratorium as well, the mural policies, I should say.
So, what I wanted to say about this is that, at the, I'm getting confused on my dates now, the February, March, at our last, at our last regular meeting, this was discussed. It was put before the Public Art Commission to get their opinion on murals, a moratorium on murals. And after a lot of discussion, and Mr. Groot was here, after a lot of discussion, the Public Art Commission felt like, you know, that this was certainly gonna be perceived out of the box as quite a negative, as we first delve into public art, it was gonna be perceived quite negatively. Reluctantly, they agreed to support it, all but one, with the caveat that we want to hurry and get our ordinance done as soon as we possibly can. Some staff members had said it could take, you know, almost up to a year to get an ordinance done, and I think we've all seen that. However, Mr. Groot has put this public art ordinance on a really accelerated schedule, and I can tell you that there just wasn't a whole lot, even though it was a go-ahead and support it vote, there wasn't a whole lot of real concern about the need for this. In fact, when we craft that ordinance, we'll be dealing with the things that, first of all, we haven't had any moratorium on murals for the last 20 years, and we haven't had a problem. So, all of a sudden, we got a mural that maybe was questionable about how tasteful it was, and quite frankly, that gentleman agreed to paint it over. The public art ordinance is gonna address not just murals in general, but murals as to, you know, where they are and how long they can stay, murals that may be more questionable may be only allowed to stay a day or two, or a week or two or three. I honestly, what I wanna tell you with all of this is, I think that we will have our ordinance done before the city ever gets around to this. I just think this is sort of becoming maybe a moot point.
So, the recommended motion is just to continue this for two more weeks?
Yeah.
So, by doing that, I mean, we kinda just stay where we are, and things continue to move along?
And just, but how many times can we continue it? I mean, that's the recommended motion, could we also not move to, to, to go ahead and just forget about it?
You can, first of all, you can continue until the advertisement becomes stale, which is typically six months or around that area. But yeah, tonight, that's the recommended motion, you could move not to, not to approve it on first reading, you could move to withdraw the ordinance from consideration, whatever you want to do, but you could move to pass it on first reading, I mean, whatever you wanna do.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Could you refresh my memory on why this commission felt that there was a need for a moratorium?
The commission didn't. It came from the planning department.
Why did the planning decide, feel that there was a need?
My office, Commissioner, was receiving concerns about the proliferation of murals that have been painted in recent months over the past year or so. And so, in terms of response to that feedback, staff proposed the idea of a moratorium until the Public Art Commission can establish specific standards. So, that was the genesis of the concept of a moratorium, as the mayor reported at the last, I believe your last meeting when this matter was being considered. He has had direct communications with the party that's been responsible for most, if not all of the murals, I wouldn't say all, but most of the murals that have been painted of late. And it's, from what I heard the mayor report, and it's my understanding too, that individual has agreed to suspend any more murals until the city has established standards and procedures.
He also painted over, just FYI, he also went so far as to paint over the mural of the drag queen on Sanford Avenue.
I wanna reveal the fact that this gentleman has decided to work with us and kind of acquiesce in terms of what he's doing, that I had a problem as an individual just eliminating the whole idea. That's just mine, as an individual.
Can I ask Russ one other thing, Mr. Vice Mayor? Russ, the issue of the, the only thing I've heard about is that somewhere in the historic district, there is a fence around a home that someone has been painting murals on. However, wouldn't that come under an HPB issue? I mean, rather than just a mural, a mural issue?
If the subject property is in the historic district, absolutely.
Do you know the property I'm talking about?
No, I'm not aware of this. But even if it's not, I mean, technically, there is no approval for any murals, period, is there?
Maybe I can help, if you, what the issue is now, is if someone were to paint a mural, and the city wanted to take code enforcement action against that person, the citation would be, "That's an illegal sign." And the defense would be, "No, no, no, it's not a sign, it's art." And therein lies the issue. If y'all don't have any problems with having that issue while the ordinance is being enacted, drafted, and then enacted, then that's fine. But that was the reason, I understood, I mean, I'm not arguing one way or the other, but that's the reason I understood that Christine wanted to move the ordinance forward. Is that, have I got that right?
That was a factor, indeed.
The Public Art Commission felt, and I realize I'm speaking for five people, and Mr. Groot has been at those meetings and has just been of unbelievable help to us. So, if you feel like I'm interpreting this wrong, please let me know, but the Public Art Commission felt like there's been no moratorium on murals for the past 100 years. So, we formed a public art commission, and the first thing we're gonna do is put a moratorium on murals. And they felt that that portrays our desire to, you know, to work with artists and make this inclusive, it just, they felt it was portrayed very negatively, and they really did not have much of a stomach for it.
So, they would rather see it just disappear altogether?
Yes. Even though they did vote for, Dr. Jett was absent from the meeting, Catherine Townsend, Kim House, and Virginia Poe voted what I would call a very reluctant yes, and Jennifer Lundquist spoke up and said no. There was a little more discussion, it just was kind of an informal meeting, and they just, they just felt a lot of negativities surrounding this. And, you know, once again, I think the mayor reached out and has talked to this one gentleman who's been more than cooperative, so if we'd have, if we'd have had a moratorium for 100 years and then it had lapsed, or even 10 years, and then it had lapsed, and then we were going back into it, but it's like, we never addressed it, we formed a public art commission, and boom, right out of the box, moral on moratoriums, you like that, don't you? You know what I meant? And I feel like with the accelerated process to get the public art ordinance done, that I don't think this is necessary.
Well, I just, my question to Mr. Groot was how soon could we see that public ordinance? And he said within 60 days, is that correct? If everybody cooperates and...
Oh, yeah. This group, this group...
That's from a legal perspective, and we can, we can get the drafting done and everything. Mr. Gibson's gonna have to talk about his staff issues, and I don't, I don't direct Mr. Gibson's staff. But legally, we can, we can do the drafting in a work session, you know, we've already had one done with the Public Art Commission, and we got the general idea about where they wanna go, so the next one, in my judgment, would be sort of fine-tuning.
And I know they're pushing hard to, this is a, this is a, this is a very interested, very professional group, and they really feel like they can get it done, you know, within that timeframe, if Mr. Gibson's staff can accommodate it.
As well.
City manager?
Yes.
That's what... But even if it's not, I mean, technically, there is no approval for any murals, period.
Maybe I can help. What the issue is now is if someone were to paint a mural, and the city wanted to take code enforcement action against that person, the citation would be, "That's an illegal sign." And the defense would be, "No, no, no, it's not a sign, it's art." And therein lies the issue. If y'all don't have any problems with having that issue while the ordinance is being enacted, drafted, and then enacted, then that's fine. But that was the reason I understood, I mean, I'm not arguing one way or the other, but that's the reason I understood that Christine wanted to move the ordinance forward. Have I got that right?
That was a factor, indeed.
The Public Art Commission felt, and I realize I'm speaking for five people, and Mr. Groot has been at those meetings and has just been of unbelievable help to us. So if you feel like I'm interpreting this wrong, please let me know. But the Public Art Commission felt like there's been no moratorium on murals for the past 100 years. So we formed a Public Art Commission, and the first thing we're gonna do is put a moratorium on murals. And they felt that that portrays our desire to, you know, to work with artists and make this inclusive. It just, they felt it was portrayed very negatively, and they really did not have much of a stomach for it.
So they would rather see it just disappear altogether?
Yes. Even though they did vote for, Dr. Jett was absent from the meeting, Catherine Townsend, Kim House, and Virginia Poe voted what I would call a very reluctant yes, and Jennifer Lundquist spoke up and said no. There was a little more discussion. It just was kind of an informal meeting. And they just felt a lot of negativities surrounding this. And, you know, once again, I think the mayor reached out and has talked to this one gentleman who's been more than cooperative. So if we'd have had a moratorium for 100 years and then it had lapsed, or even 10 years, and then it had lapsed, and then we were going back into it, but it's like, we never addressed it, we formed a Public Art Commission, and boom, right out of the box, mural on moratoriums, you like that, don't you? You know what I meant. And I feel like with the accelerated process to get the Public Art Ordinance done, that I don't think this is necessary.
Well, and I just, my question to Mr. Groot was, how soon could we see that Public Ordinance? And he said within 60 days, is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
If everybody operates and...
This group, this group...
That's from a legal perspective. We can get the drafting done and everything. Mr. Gibson's gonna have to talk about his staff issues. I don't direct Mr. Gibson's staff. But legally, we can do the drafting in a work session. You know, we've already had one done with the Public Art Commission, and we got the general idea about where they wanna go. So the next one, in my judgment, would be sort of fine-tuning.
And I know they're pushing hard to, this is a very interested, very professional group, and they really feel like they can get it done, you know, within that timeframe if Mr. Gibson's staff can accommodate it.
We will.
Assistant Manager?
Yes.
That's what we want. Can you make it happen?
We've heard from the planning director, I know that there's a staffing issue in terms of a secretariat for the commission, because that has not been established. And that is one that Mr. Gibson has taken on somewhat of himself. And so if Mr. Gibson is saying that it will be done, it will be done.
Yeah, so far, you know, it's been great. Between Mr. Gibson and Ronnie Groot and that board, I think great things are gonna happen.
I have a question and a comment. First, just to clarify, so this all stemmed from citizen complaints. It was not a staff idea originally. Staff just worked with what citizens were bringing to them.
As far as the genesis of the Cor Act?
Yeah.
Oh, just for clarification, the genesis of the Art Commission, the genesis of the moratorium?
The moratorium.
My understanding is that that was stamped and initiated, as Mr. Groot said, in the protection of the city.
And, correct, in response to the complaints we received from the community.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Because, you know, I was just sort of disturbed by some of the comments made on social media about this, and some comments that were directed at our staff that I thought were inappropriate.
Like what?
Well, I don't want to repeat them.
Well, art of it's out there, how are we gonna know?
Let me finish the sentence. You know, blaming Christine for this, and that, you know, talking negatively about the quality of her work, which I think she does a fantastic job, and a lot of other people do too. And I just think it was unfortunate that it went that way.
Doesn't everything in this city go like that?
Not everything.
Don't most things in this city go like that?
But in all honesty, I mean, staff was simply replying to citizen concerns and requests and issues that they had, so I mean, there's...
It bothers me when our staff is attacked for doing their job.
Correct. One, right, it's right hand and the left hand are just competing with each other. So Commissioner Mahaney, you're the one that's elbow-deep in this and know more of the ins and outs?
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, I don't wanna be perceived either as disrespecting Mrs. Dalton, Ms. Dalton, or Mr. Gibson. I just think that, you know, the one thing that isn't reflected on social media, things are fluid, things change. How are we gonna, how was Christine Dalton gonna know that the man, you know, was gonna be so cooperative and he was gonna paint over his mural? And, you know, I just, I mean, if you feel, if you feel like...
No, I mean, no one was for this ordinance. It was only continued. So if there was, if it was necessary, we wouldn't need to re-advertise.
That's correct.
Well, and with all due respect, right.
With not passing this.
Well, then I'm gonna make a motion that we, Ronnie, Ronnie, Ronnie...
I won't answer to anything. What's the motion?
What's the, what's the problem?
Is your desire not to consider this further?
I think, I really think so. I think, I think the circumstances have changed, and enough that we can proceed forward in a positive manner with our public art ordinance.
Yeah, the appropriate motion would be to move to not proceed with first reading of this ordinance.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
You have a motion in a second? Do we need to have any public comment?
Yes, you would on that now.
Okay, so, all right, so then, you need to take the motion. We need to open it up for public comment now.
That's okay. Now, under the, no, no, not really, because under the new public participation statute, that used to be just a purely procedural matter. But now there's a decision that's about to be made, so now you could open it up and then vote after you see if anybody's interested in that issue, whether or not to stop the proceeding on this ordinance.
Okay.
So you're in the right situation.
So now we open this up?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to now speak to this ordinance? Being done, we do have the motion in a second on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, the second public hearing we have is first reading of ordinance number 4376. Mr. Groot, if you would read that by title, please.
Yes, Mr. Graham. An ordinance of the City of Sanford, Florida, annexing by voluntary petition certain real property, tax identification parcel number 28-19-30-506-0000-0090, addressed as 4085 West State Road 46, located contiguous to the City of Sanford in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, together with associated rights of way. We define the boundaries of the City of Sanford to include said property, amending the boundaries of the city in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 166.031 Florida statutes, providing for findings, providing for conditions, directing the city clerk to record the ordinance with the clerk of the circuit court, with the chief administrative office of Samuel County, and with the Department of State, providing for a legal description and a map, and providing for the incorporation of that exhibit, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability, providing for non-codification in the taking of administrative actions, and providing for ineffective data. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bonaparte?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of the City Commission. The city's development review team reviewed the request for annexation on March the 22nd, 2016, and found the request to meet the criteria set forth in Section 171.044 of the Florida statutes. It is therefore staff's recommendation that the City Commission approve the first reading of ordinance number 4376 to annex .87 acre bearing the address of 4085 West State Road 46 as legally described into the City of Sanford.
Thank you, sir. This is also a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this issue, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion of the item and move on to the commission.
Move to approve first reading ordinance 4376.
Second.
You have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 8A is approval of resolution number 2590.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of the City Commission. It is the city clerk's recommendation that the City Commission approve the proposed resolution number 2590 relating to the 2016 city referendum election.
Well, just in the spirit of what we've done the last few years, I am gonna open this up to a public comment. If there's anyone who'd like to speak to this, please come forward. Seeing no one, turn it over to the commission.
Move to approve resolution number 2590.
Second.
Uh, the motion in a second for resolution 2590, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item B is resolution number 2591, Mr. Bonaparte.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of the City Commission. The staff's recommends the City Commission approve resolution 2591, dedicating the quality to the city manager set forth in the resolution, and this is pertaining to non-agenderized matters that will then conserve staff time and reduce expenses currently incurred by the city, and it does not increase any cost.
I'm also gonna open this up to the public. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I'll turn it over to the commission.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion in a second for resolution 2591, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. City attorneys report, Mr. Groot.
Mr. Colbert says hello from Tennessee, and it's good to see everybody tonight.
Good to see you. Go No. City clerk?
I don't know, I think I'm not so sure.
City manager?
Just to thank the residents that came out to the charrette that was held regarding the city's catalyst site on Saturday at the civic center, particularly the youngest member of the Citizens Academy.
Bo, yay, Bo!
All right, thank you. Now it's citizen participation. Anybody who wished to address the commission? Now's your time, come on down.
I think our two boy scouts should have to come down and introduce themselves and get their names on the public record.
Oh, you are cruel!
You guys doing this...
We'll be forever enshrined in...
Yep.
Your birthday? Oh, my gosh!
Come and introduce yourselves.
Come down, introduce yourself, and tell us what you are working towards by being here.
School.
Set up the microphone.
Um, my name's Andrea Emilio, and...
My name's Ralph Clark.
We're, um, we have to fill out a paper of like, we have to explain an issue that is in the...
Which merit badge?
Citizenship in the Community and Communications. So basically, it says, "Attend a meeting of your city, town, or city council or school board." And then it says, oh, then it says, "Identify the meeting." And then it says, "Choose one of the issues discussed at the meeting where a difference of opinions was expressed." And that was for citizenship in the community. In communications, it says, "Attend a public meeting, city council, school board, or debate approved by your counselor. Practice active listening skills and take careful notes of each point of view." And then it says, "Prepare an objective report that includes all points of view that were expressed and share this with your counselor."
Very good. I'm glad, I'm glad we had the discussion about the moratorium.
Yeah!
That gave them something to report on.
At the end of the meeting, if you guys wanna come down and take any of our notes and material we have in here, please come on down, we'd be happy to give it to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, how old are you? Awesome.
Anybody else? All right, seeing no one, we'll close citizen participation and turn it over to the city commissioners for their reports. Let's start down to the very end. Commissioner Woodruff?
Okay, just wanna mention two volunteer efforts this last weekend that I know of. One, I just make sure everybody is aware that we now have a group of citizens who has taken it upon themselves to start doing some cleanups around town following the littering discussion. And I think they had about 50 people show up Sunday morning, and they have set up a Facebook page, Sanford Community Cleanup. And their next one is going to be in May, it's a Saturday in May on 17/92. On Saturday, there were about 35 people, most of them from Holy Cross Lutheran and Lake Mary, at Hopper Academy, and primed 7,500 lineal feet of siding for us in a couple of hours, and all of the beadboard that will go inside, and...
7,500 feet?
Mm-hmm. Yep. It'll have to be primed before it could go up.
Amazing!
And both sides of it, so 15,000 feet of paint. It was...
Amazing!
Quite a task.
Yeah.
It was very helpful to have them along. We do have the fundraising luncheon on the 21st. I'm sorry, reluctant to say this, but I will, depending on how that goes, I may be coming back to the commission and asking for some more support for Hopper.
I will certainly be at the luncheon. If you wanna go, I'll pick you up.
I'm gonna go, and I'll let you know. I want you to pick me up.
Is that all?
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Mahaney?
Um, I don't have anything tonight, but thank you.
You are welcome. Dr. Williams?
Yes. Three things. First, I just want to announce for everybody in the whole world to know that for the first time in my life, I arose at 6 o'clock in the morning to participate in a 5K run.
What?
On Saturday.
So you are nuts.
Yes.
Did you actually walk it?
Yes, for a period of time. Two blocks, I believe.
Unpress it. You went right there. Had to get the paper and got swept up.
Yes, I, block, block and a half, and then Mr. Thomas had a cart for me. So I wanna thank the staff, Mr. Bonaparte and the staff, all your participation. And secondly, I would like to thank Mr. Bonaparte and his staff, more specifically, Mr. Currie and Mrs. Lisa Jones, for again, providing an extraordinary event for senior citizens on Saturday night at the West Side Community Center, the Spring Fane. And all of you who were not there, I know you were there, and you might not have been there in body, but you were in there in mind. So I want to thank all of you for that. And lastly, I just want to again thank Art for all of the support that he's given in making the Hopper project become a reality. Thank you.
I have nothing further, other than my 16-year-old son is taking him tomorrow at 10 o'clock to get his driver's license.
Oh, you're home.
So if I'm not back by noon, send a search party. With that, we're adjourned.